Okay. So we'll bring this meeting of Kingston Planning Board to order at 6:30. 3 P M. It is January 27th. It's a Wednesday, and this is an off meeting for us, but we've had a busy schedule lately and we were fitting fitting an additional application in here and wanted to wanted to move things along with it. So so we have a little different day for our meeting. We will do the roll call once we get through the the prerequisites here. So as as Chair of the of the Planning Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020 dash oh four, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number. And that would be, oh, gosh. And the meeting ID is 871-8034-9105. Or by clicking on the link, the website, the web address link on the Planning Board's agenda. And if you don't have a copy of it, it can be found on the Planning Board's website page on the Towns website, which is Kingston nh.org. And if you just go to Departments and the dropdown will get you to Planning Board, and you can go over to agendas, and when you pull up the one for January 27th, it will have the link to this Zoom meeting located on it. Let's see. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the Board, which was, as I stated before, Kingston nh.org, and going to the Planning Board's page. If anybody has a problem, please call 770-9822. And Glenn Greenwood is monitoring that number, and he'll be picking that up if if anyone has an issue with it. Or by emailing the Planning Board, which is also being monitored. Hello? Who's speaking?
I just want to let you know the Planning Board, the Planning Board phone number links to the email directly. You don't have to give out another phone number. That's working, and I am monitoring it. So if someone calls the Planning Board Office, it connects right to the email.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you, Ellen. I I did not know that. So let's scratch that previous phone number that I gave and use the Planning Board's office number. If you if you're having an issue connecting to us here, and that one is 603-642-3342, extension six. Let's see. Or by emailing the Planning Board at In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call. So we'll start the meeting by taking roll call attendance, and when each member states their presence, if they would also state whether or not they're alone, or if there are other folks in the room with them, which is required under the Right to Know law. Okay. Ellen, would it be easier for me to call the roll, or do you want to do it?
He's just coming back in now.
All right, I'm going to start calling the roll then, and let's see, I'm not sure. We have, we have Lynn with us. Do we have all of our board members?
Looks like we're missing Chris still.
We're missing Chris, but we Steve can fill in until Chris comes comes in with us. So Steve, until until and if Chris shows up, you can, you'll be our voting member for tonight.
Okay.
All right, I'll start by calling the roll. Peter Coffin.
I'm present alone.
Peter Bakie.
Present alone in my office.
Richard Wilson.
Present alone.
Robin Dugay.
Present and alone.
Lynn Merrill.
Present alone.
Steve Padfield.
Present, and my wife is in the room.
Okay. And Glenn Koppelman here, present, and I am alone in my home office. Did I miss anybody? One, two, three, four, five, six, I've got seven, so that gives us our number. Okay, so we have a full seven member board sitting and voting for this evening. Glenn, are you seeing any members of the public sitting in the waiting room? Okay. Alex, when we get to the point of public comment, I'll explain the process at that time, just so I don't need to do it twice. So we've called the meeting to order, we've done our roll call, we've done our compliance checklist. It's not quite 6:45, it is 6:40. So John, I'm going to ask you to hang in there for just a couple of minutes, and we're gonna, we're gonna start this at its appointed time, but maybe we can do a couple of quick other items of business while we're while we're vamp, while we're vamping till ready here. Okay. We have, we have requests, one in writing and one that Ellen told me about, requests to release remaining funds that are that have been in escrow on older projects. One of them is for the Six Spruce Lane condominium conversion project that was done. And we have that request in writing. And Glenn, I don't know if you have any details for us on this, but is there any outstanding work to be done?
I'll check and make sure I don't have any other billing, but it's that's been quite a while, so I I don't, I will.
How about if we do a conditional, a vote conditional upon you determining that there are no outstanding items? So I'd be willing to accept a motion to release the remaining escrow funds for Capri Realty and Management LLC for the Six Spruce Lane condo association project pending any outstanding determinations by Glenn Greenwood.
So move.
Second, Peter Coffin.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Who made the motion?
Robin and me.
Robin. All right. Robin, Robin, the motion, Lynn second. Any further discussion? All right, I'll call the roll for that one. Peter Coffin?
Yes.
Peter Bakie?
Yes.
Richard Wilson?
abstain.
Robin Dugay?
Yes.
Lynn Merrill?
Yes.
Steve Padfield? Steve, you need to unmute yourself.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
And Glenn is a yes, so that's six in favor, none opposed, one abstention. Motion carries. We have a similar request for, and I don't have it in writing, this was verbal from Ellen before we started the meeting, and it's for the I believe it's New England Automation, Glenn, at Four Main Street. It was a former auto salvage facility. And again, it's another older project, but apparently there's a request pending on that one as well for release of remaining funds in escrow. Glenn, do you have any updated info on that one?
And I have one more to add.
What's that?
There's one more to add.
One more what to add?
A request for release of escrow.
The Four Main Street.
CVS medical billing. No, one, there's an additional one for CVS medical billing.
Oh. Okay, I
It came in, it came in with their letter stating that they're withdrawing their application and not going to go forward.
Okay, well, can we, can we dispense? Can we dispense with Four Main Street then, before we go to that one?
Yes, I'm sorry, sure.
Oh, okay. Is there anything, anything more, Glenn, on Four Main Street that you can tell us? Or should we, should we vote it conditional upon you double checking any outstanding items?
That would be fine.
All right, then I would
Addition of bond, checking for anything.
Then I would accept a motion to that effect.
Yeah, so move that we release the bond pending Glenn Greenwood's determination of no outstanding items against it.
So motion by Peter Coffin?
Second.
By Robin Dugay. And that's for the Four Main Street project, it's New England Automation, is that correct, Glenn?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Okay, I'll call the roll on that one. Peter Coffin?
Yes.
Peter Bakie?
Yes.
Richard Wilson?
Stay.
Robin Dugay?
Yes.
Lynn Merrill?
Yeah.
Steve Padfield?
Yes.
And Glenn Koppelman is yes, so the motion is, I'm sorry, the vote is six in favor, none opposed, one abstention, motion carries. And Glenn, the last one you said was for CVS?
Yes, medical billing.
Okay.
And they were, they got the approval on New Boston Road, the former Archangel woodworking place.
Yes.
And they've, they've, they're unfortunately not going to go forward.
Oh, well, that's too bad.
Yeah.
All right.
And so they've asked for their escrow account as well.
Okay, so I'm assuming we could do the same motion as we did for the other two, and you'll, you'll just double check it before doing the final release?
Absolutely.
May I have a motion, please, to that effect?
Yeah, I'll move that we release the bond on the is it CMS billing?
DVS.
DVS, okay, and on the Boston Road pending review by Glenn Greenwood of any outstanding charges.
Motion by, motion by Peter Coffin, second by, was that you, Richard?
No, Steve Padfield.
Oh, Steve, thank you. All right, motion by Peter Coffin, second by Steve Padfield. Further discussion? All right, I'll call the roll. Peter Coffin?
Yes.
Peter Bakie?
Yes.
Richard Wilson?
Stay.
Rob, Robin Dugay?
Yes.
Lynn Merrill?
Yes.
Steve Padfield?
Yes.
And Glenn Koppelman is yes. So that vote motion carries. Six in favor, none opposed, one abstention. Okay, it is, well, we're now past the 6:45 time, so we have one other item, but I'll, I'll leave that until we're finished with with our public hearing. Okay. So it's 6:47 P M. We'll start the public hearing for Greenwood Pond LLC at 16 Church Street in Kingston, tax map U10 lot 17. And the legal notice reads that the applicant is requesting to subdivide the property into condos. And for those of you who are maybe need a refresher on why we're doing a subdivision application for a condo conversion, condo activity such as this per per state RSAs considers it subdivision, and so it needs to go through subdivision process, and that's why we're, that's why we're doing it. So we have Jonathan Ring from Jones and Beach with us, and also Tina?
Tina, yes.
Tina Radigan?
From Greenwood Pond.
From Greenwood Pond. Okay. So John, are you going to be doing a presentation of this for us?
Yes.
So why don't you go ahead and share your screen and walk us through it?
So I'll start share screen and I'll go to this plan. There were two plans, this is Jonathan Ring from Jonesa Beach Engineers and Stratum. And as Glenn mentioned, Tina Radigan is here from Abenaki Timber and Greenwood Pond Condominium Association. This is the the condominium site plan, and this is obviously Church Street here on the left. You can see it all, okay?
John, we're not, we're, you haven't, you haven't shared your screen yet.
Is it, oh, share over here. Wrong place. Okay, is that it?
There you go.
Okay. Thank you, sorry about that. I'll shrink it down just a little bit. So this is obviously Church Street here on the east side. We have Abenaki Timber exit, this is all existing site. There's no proposed new parking lots or new driveways. This is all existing conditions, and what we're trying to do is put a condominium line between land unit A here for Abenaki Timber and land unit B, which is for Northland Forest Products out in the back. These two buildings have been here since, so somewhere around 1977, and they've been functioning very well. This is obviously two well-respected business operations that have been in in town for many years. And these two commercial businesses are the entities comprised the entities of Greenwood Pond Condominium. We submitted with the application on December 8th the Declaration of Condominium and the bylaws for the association that had been prepared by Orrin Reno attorneys in Concord. Those legal documents spell out the rights, the maintenance criteria for each of the land unit owners and the common area, which is down here. I'll blow this up just a little bit. There's common area here, it says common area. I see it's a little blurry on my screen, but this is the common area in the vicinity of the existing dock and the dock area here toward the backside by Greenwood Pond. The total parcel is about one and a half, 1.8 acres. And we're looking, as I say, for approval from this planning board to record the condominium site plan as well as then the bylaws and the declarations. There are several waivers associated with the application that we'll get back to in just a couple of minutes. As you can see, the plans, there's, here's the parking for Abenaki Timber out front. It's got its access right off Church Street. There is, and again, I'll blow it up just a little bit, there's an existing sign. I noticed that it's not labeled here on Church Street. That's an existing sign, which is shown on the plans. So this is, this is a complete self-contained little unit for that particular building. The leach field for the existing building is here, propane tanks and so forth. There is a well, which is at this location for both of these units that is shared by the units. And again, the maintenance and so forth for those rights are spelled out in the condominium documents. Northland Forest Products has an easement across land of Christie, the abutter here to the, to the north side. So their driveway comes in separately. Now, if there were a shared driveway or shared parking, those also might be limited common areas, but that's not the case on this. They did such a good job planning it all out that each of the entities is essentially intact. So the parking for Northland Forest Products is here, and they're building obviously here. They have their own leach field over at this location. And again, this is a proposal for land unit A, and we've got the square footage and everything else for that. And this is the configuration of land unit B up at the top. I will just call your attention for a second to I don't, my, my photos, anyway, note number one indicates that each building is office use, and the hours are nine to five, nine in the morning to five in the afternoon. On the first plan, there was a question about the number of employees. We have seven employees which are called out here in the building on the existing conditions plan. Seven employees at the Abenaki Timber, and there are 12 employees at Northland Forest Products. I should mention that we were last here before the Board on September 17th, 2019, with an earlier version of these materials, and we received many review comments from Planner Glenn Greenwood and Dennis Quintel, the town engineer. It's taken us a while to complete these plans and the legal documents to return to you. I apologize for the delay. I did submit a response letter dated December 8th to all of those comments that had previously been made in September of 2019, and that should be in your pockets. We have received, in your packets, we have received and addressed most of those. I also received a review letter from Glenn Greenwood on Monday and a memo from Dennis Quintel about the current plans and the current application. So I'd like to address just a few of those now. I mentioned the existing sign, which is out here, and there's a fire department note apparently that we will add as hopefully a condition of approval to the plan that Glenn pointed out. I showed you the number of employees on sheet C1 here in the set and the hours of operation. And as I say, there are a few waivers, we've got, we've got those called out. Yes, note number three, so we may have to add to these waivers. It says granted from the, but the plan is not finished until you finally approve it. And it's up to the Board to decide, of course, whether the condominium documents, the driveway easement, and the drainage pipe easement, I'll show you where that is. There's a, an existing drainage pipe from Church Street here coming down across Christie Land and across the Northland Forest Products Unit B down here in this vicinity, and then it gets into land unit A. So there's a drainage easement that was requested that we prepare, which Orrin Reno did for us, that's also in your package. And it's up to the Board whether those need to be reviewed by Town Council before finishing it off. And again, that can be a condition of approval, as you know. Glenn, Dennis had mentioned a septic system elevation change, which can easily be be done. I need to talk with him about that separately. In our opinion, it looks right, but I just need to clarify exactly what he means. The state subdivision approval for the project was approved, these two condominium land units was approved on August 20, 2020, and I'm going to add that to note number six here. There are some blank spaces here in note number six on the condominium site plan, so I need to add the approval for the subdivision. The trash goes into a dumpster here, which is called out. It's not called out on the condominium site plan, but it is called out on the existing conditions plan right here. That's where the the trash goes. That was a comment from Glenn again. We did submit two pocket plans, leach fields, for possible replacement. Now, as I mentioned, we have a leach field right in this vicinity today for Abenaki Timber. We have a separate leach field here for Northland Forest Products. And one of the comments in the review in 2019 was, well, do they meet town and state setbacks? There's a hundred-foot buffer here, so we created a pocket plan with a leach field up in this vicinity for land unit B and a pocket plan for a possible replacement here. It's not intended that these pocket plan septic systems be actually installed unless one of the existing systems fail, which we're not expecting to happen. We submitted those to the Health Officer for review and submission to the state a few months ago, but he said he would not act on it until we get the the approval for the two separate lots by the Planning Board, even with conditions. I assume if we had a conditional approval from you, he would allow us to send those to the state. So that's a, that those are in the wings, ready to go. And as I say, each building has a fine working operational septic system that's, that's not an issue at all. The septic flows for these are very light, as I say, seven employees at Abenaki and 12 employees at at Northland Forest. So again, the only reason that we've done all this work is to create the two land condominium units to separate as separate and distinct parcels, entities for estate planning purposes. There is no proposed physical change to the site. We're not building any new parking spaces, we're not doing any new driveways, there's no new drainage, no landscape, none of that. It's, it's strictly for the condominium approval of this, of this project. And Tina, is there anything you'd like to add right now before I go on to the waivers or ask Glenn how to address the waivers?
I mean, for me, we just want to keep it as simple as possible. I mean, this is not about, it's about two family members that just want to have, for estate purposes, completely separate the entities and not have a combined ownership anymore. I mean, that's all I really have to add. John has done such a fabulous job getting this together for us, so I think he's got all the answers. I don't know if anybody has any questions for me.
Well, I think, I think at this point, John, if, if, if you've sort of completed the initial presentation before we start getting into the discussion of waivers, I'd like Glenn and Dennis to review their comments. I know you've addressed them in your comments, but we typically do like to have them go through it just for the Board's benefit and
Sure, that's fine.
So if we could do that, and then maybe we can get back into a discussion with the Board, and we can talk about the waivers, and and we'll take public comment and Board comment as well. I did neglect earlier to mention folks who are with us who are, who are not, not specifically Board members voting tonight, but we have Glenn Greenwood, our town planner. We have Dennis Quintal, our town engineer, and Ellen Faulkner, who is our administrative assistant, and she's also an alternate to the Planning Board.
And
Did I miss anybody?
Glenn, Chris Bashaw came in.
Oh. John, could you unshare your screen for the moment, just so I can get a better sense for? There we go.
Hi, Glenn. Yeah, sorry for the delay. The having a meeting on a Wednesday completely threw me off. I was on my
Yeah, I can't imagine why.
Yeah. Peter, Peter texted me, he goes, are you coming? And so I came back to the house.
All right, so Chris, you're now the voting member, and Steve, you're back to an alternate to participate as you, as you wish, but not vote.
Okay. Okay.
All right, so I, Chris, hopefully you caught some of that presentation, but we're going to go now to Glenn and Dennis for for their comments. Whichever one of you would like to go first, I'm fine with.
Oh, I don't care. I'll go first if you want.
Sure.
All right, so my first comment was the town's protected well radius is 100 feet. And there's a, the plan details the 75-foot well radius that is the state standard. In the interim, we have received from Jonathan Ring a waiver request on the 100-foot that I believe got sent to all planning board members, maybe today, it might have been yesterday. It's fuzzy in my mind, but I think everybody received that by email.
You, you did, you included that.
The proposed driveway easement language associated with land unit B should be provided to the town and perhaps reviewed by Town Council. Jonathan points out that there is an actual, there is a sign shown on the plan. And when he pointed it out to me, I agree, that's, that looks like a sign to me. So maybe when he does the revisions, if he indicated that that was a sign, but it definitely is on the plan. So my number three is, is no longer necessary. The plan should include the required note found in section 90514C29 and the subdivision regs regarding the Kingston Fire Department regulations. And I think that's the note that John was indicating that he would, earlier than he would add. The plan indicates the number of employees for each building, but the building uses and the hours of operation for each building should be noted. And he showed me online on a note that that is there, so that's also been taken care of. The application requests for waivers, three or subdivision regulation waivers. And of these three, one has actually been noted on the plan and is no longer necessary. The two remaining subdivision waiver requests are detailed on the plan. I mean, plan no, either two or three, I don't remember which. The fourth waiver request is, it's, it's a request not to show the district boundary for the Shoreland Protection District. That's actually, that requirement is actually found in zoning ordinance itself in section 05, I think. And so that's not something that the Planning Board can waive. That's a zoning requirement. That's a zoning requirement, so it really should be shown on the plan.
Yeah, that's fine.
And the condominium documents, we do have them. I did look through them. They are fairly standard. But the board has usually sent them to town council, so I just wanted to point that out and so that the discussion could be had. And that that ends the comments that I had on this and for this evening.
Great. Thank you, Glenn. Dennis?
Yes, so I only have a few left over from previous review. So after I received the plans, I did get copies of the sanitary disposal plans for unit A and B and also response letter from Jones and Beach Engineers. So I deleted the previous comments and and the remaining ones added or or remains. So on the sanitary disposal plans that I have for units A and B on system unit A, I find the height above seasonal water table the bottom of of versus the bottom of the test when when none was found. It's five point eight five, not six feet as required. And and John, that's in section thirteen oh one point six C requires six feet above seasonal high water table for systems in the aquifer zone. So obviously, review that and give me a call if if you have a question about that. Condominium documents must be reviewed. I didn't get a copy, so I understand they have been submitted and reviewed from what Glenn says. Easements should be needed. They should need to be provided for the water and electric between the units. But if that information is in the condominium documents and it's clear, perhaps that it's not necessary to show that, but typically where work is being provided on somebody else's property limits of the 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 usage, which are identified as as a common area are usually defined on the plan. So if it's clear in the condominium documents and possibly doesn't have to be shown on the plan, but that's certainly up to the board to review that. State subdivision approval, I understand, has been obtained. That approval number should be on the plan. The plans must indicate the use was of operation and number of employees, which I know he said the John has answered those, I guess. And the last comment was show the type and location for the solid waste disposal facilities or provide a note. And those are the comments that I have submitted for review. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Okay. Are there any any immediate questions or comments from the board? Because I and Glenn, I need I'd like to know if there's anyone in the waiting room from public.
No one in the waiting room, but Ms. Christie is here.
Well, I see we have two of butters actually here, and I'm so I will I I will open it.
I only thought of Elektra as a as a select person, but of course, you're right. She's in a butter.
Yes, yes. So I in in a moment, I'll recognize them if they have comment, but I I want to give the board a chance if they if they have anything at this point.
I was a little confused about the driveway easement that was referred to as proposed. And it also said that it had already been drawn up. John said that. Is it is it finalized?
I believe so.
Yes, it is. It is finalized. I mean, the driveway has been used for many years, but it was never officially formal formalized, so they and that was submitted in the materials. There's a driveway and easement deed which is not recorded, but I received it on August seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, and it's even signed by the Christie's. But it needs to have the reference for the plan number. This plan goes with it, but the easement has been has been endorsed by the Christie's, and I think Mrs. Christie might be here. I'm not sure.
I'm her daughter. And yes, I was involved with the Frenchies on the on the easement. Finalizing it. We approved it.
Yes. So the text is all here, but it hasn't, I believe it hasn't been recorded at the registry, subject to the plan to be recorded with a plan number.
Right. Right. I'll just let you know that board members did not get that or the condo docs or the your response letter that you referred to. So that's why we're asking some questions that you may have felt you submitted and did, but all we got is the is the plan set.
Well, that's, should I share a screen, Glenn, or?
What is it that you wanted to show, John?
This is the transmittal that we submitted to the planning board on December eighth and twenty twenty, and this is the list of the eighteen items that so I don't know how it gets from the town office to the board members. But all of these materials were delivered at the town office on December eighth, including the response letter, the easement deed for Christie's, the New Hampshire approval for subdivision, the declaration of condominiums, the the bylaws for the condominiums, the drainage easement, which I referenced. So I apologize that they didn't get delivered in paper somehow to you folks as well.
Well, how was this transmitted electronically, John, or?
It was. Yes, it was emailed as well. It was emailed on December ninth to Ellen and Glenn for distribution.
Okay.
There was a there was a share box link or something that we're supposed to go to to download it all, but so I apologize for that.
Well, it's not well, no need for you to apologize.
Your fault.
Glenn or Ellen, did you did you see those?
Yes, I've I mean, I've I've seen all of the information for this application. We don't generally send all those things to everyone. They've been available in any board office, though, in time for this entire time.
Okay. Legal counsel hasn't reviewed any of the legal docs, though. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So that's something the board needs to needs to be thinking about as part of any further action on this. Let's see. John, speaking of recording things, have you been thinking about which sheet or sheets might be the recorded ones?
Sheet number two, sheet A one is the plan that's intended to be recorded at the registry, the condominium site plan.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, the other plan sheet is just existing conditions.
Yes, correct. Yep.
I just had one question. I noticed on the plans that they had indicated the primary structure setback for shoreline protection for the state and the protected shoreline and the woodland buffer all for the state. But Kingston's shoreline protection boundaries are different. And I didn't know if they should have been placed on the plan as well, or if I somehow missed seeing them. Because we have the hundred and fifty foot setback for all buildings and the three hundred foot setback for the entire shoreline protection. So I just didn't know if they should be on the plan as well as the others.
Yes, I will add them to the plan. That was one of Glenn Greenwood's comments, so I will add those as additional notes. It gets a little busy with all the different setbacks, but it's important to do. We will. We will add those.
And my second question was, I saw the dumpster for Northland Forest Products. I did not see a dumpster for Abenaki, so I'm assuming there is none.
There is no dumpster. We we don't have a dumpster. I mean, we don't really produce. We recycle. We have a recycle queen at our office. No kidding. We call her the queen. She makes us use the other side of the paper. Like, we're not allowed to throw any paper in the trash. So we literally have one bag of trash a week. We're very, very, very frugal with our trash.
This is true. I can see your trash from my house and
Yeah. One one trash. It's Lee's. You do you remember Lee's?
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, she is all like the Gestapo when it comes to recycling. So.
Okay. All right. That's that's good to know. If we if we have no other public waiting out there, Glenn, I'd like to give the two of butters who are on with us the opportunity, if they wish to speak, just raise your hand and I'll recognize you. And you can either ask a question or make a comment. Ellie? Oh, you need to unmute yourself.
There we go. Yeah, thank you. I have no absolutely no objections to the proposal. I I think they've done a very good job in meeting all the criteria for the town, and so I I would wholeheartedly endorse this proposal.
Thank you. Jane, do you have anything further you'd like to add?
I don't. Thank you.
Okay. Then with that, I will consider public comment closed and bring it back to the board. John, maybe maybe you can walk us through the waiver request, just so that we're all clear on what what they are.
Absolutely. Would I, did the board members? Okay, so the board members did not see them in there.
Well, what what we do have
But I can share them.
You can share them, but what we do have is the waiver request for the water supply and sewage.
Okay, so I'll I'll start with the first one here. The first waiver request that Greenwood Pond condominium folks submitted is for a reduction in the engineering fee. The the application requested five thousand dollars, and I believe, Tina, I think you guys paid five hundred?
We paid an additional.
Okay, so the
It was like fifty, what is it, fifty-two hundred or fifty-three hundred? What was it?
Well, normally, normally, the application, the engineering deposit is a five thousand dollar number, but
We didn't pay five thousand, sorry.
But 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 that that would have been taken care of back when you made the application, Glenn, is that right?
I had to to add more money to it. Yeah, it's all set, though.
But Glenn, we don't need to take further action on that, do we?
You don't.
All right. Okay, John, next.
The next one, I believe, I'll have to go over to
We're not see, we're not seeing anything if you're trying to share.
No, I'm going to close a couple of tabs to
Okay.
Get myself to the appropriate exhibit. So this is the waiver quest letter here. And I'll expand it a little bit. And then I'll go to share screen. So yes, here it is. Can you see it now?
Yes.
So this is dated November twenty-three, and again, this is from Greenwood Pond. The first one is the requirement in the subdivision application for a mandatory preliminary review. And I'm not sure, Glenn, if you said that's an obsolete one.
No, that one's that that's that's an appropriate one.
Okay, so shall I just talk about them all, Glenn, and then Mr. Koppelman, and then you can act on them separately?
Absolutely.
Okay, so the first one is nine point oh five point four, the mandatory preliminary review. And the there's no change to the existing conditions. The purpose of the subdivisions to convert these two properties to buildings into separate condominium units, as we said, for estate planning. The next one is two oh five point three district conservation district boundaries. And again, it's a site with no change to existing conditions. The purpose is strictly for the we did show the edge of the marsh, and effectively, that is, I think, the wetland defined, but it's it's not, you know, anyway, that's one of the requests. The next one is nine oh five point one four subdivision plan showing the flood protection areas and shoreline protection boundaries. I do not, we do not show the flood area, but we are going to add the shoreline boundary, which is for the zoning. And again, this is for fifty lots or five acres, which were much smaller than that. So
That's the one, John, I thought or on the plan saying that you fall within the proper floodplain zone. And you've you've added that as a note on the plan. So I that I feel that that one is superfluous.
Okay, then the next one is the request for a soil survey report. Again, there's no change to the property, so we're we're requesting that waiver as part of the process. And the final one is the one that we just submitted. I think it's right here. On on Monday, Tuesday, this is a, this came up because Glenn observed, Glenn, Mr. Greenwood observed that the town has a one hundred foot protective well radius, and we show the seventy-five foot radius, which is the state requirement. As I mentioned, we did receive the state subdivision approval with the state setbacks on the four thousand square foot area. So this is a request here for a waiver from section nine oh five point two four, water supply and sewage facilities. And I'll read this through. The existing well on the subject, mine's getting broken off, so there it is. The existing well on the subject property was installed over forty years ago and predates the subdivision regulation regarding well and septic one hundred foot separation, well as Board of Health Articles thirteen oh one point six point B two and thirteen oh four point one B. The existing well and the two septic systems have served these two commercial buildings with no trouble for many years. The New Hampshire DES subdivision approval, approval for subdivision for the parcel into two condominium units was obtained, as I said, on August twenty twenty-two twenty twenty, in accordance with state regulations and state setbacks. It's not possible to show one hundred foot distance around that well to a septic, a four thousand square foot septic reserve area on land unit B. It just it's too far into that corner from the existing water supply meeting the Town of Kingston regulations. Furthermore, once the pocket plan that we've submitted for land unit B is approved by the state, the four thousand square foot reserve area is technically unnecessary because the intention of the four thousand septic reserve area on a typical subdivision is to show that there's at least four thousand feet where a leach field could be placed. And obviously, if we have an approved leach field pocket plan from the state, that is a leach field, and we don't need to look for other places to locate it. The test pits were performed for each land unit and witnessed by Peter Broderick, the health inspector. Chris Albert, New Hampshire DES Subsurface Disposal System Designer ten eighty-five has over thirty years of our of experience logging test pits in accordance with town and state regulations. We believe that each of these pocket plans fall under the Board of Health Article thirteen oh one point four as, quote, repair replacement of existing subsurface disposal systems. Since each of these plans is not intended to be installed unless the existing operational system fails, in which case the approved pocket plan could be installed. So a waiver of that regulation is respectfully requested.
Okay, thank you, John.
Should I stop sharing?
Well, actually not, because because if if we're going to take these up one at a time, we do have the one you've got up on the screen. You you could take that one down because we we have that in our hands. But the other one that you had with the multitude on it, going to need those to refer to, so probably best to leave them up on the screen.
Is it here now?
It is.
Okay.
And just for clarification, if I could, the second one there, that's the one that's actually in zoning in two oh five point three district boundaries, actually is not the wetlands conservation district. Two oh five point three is appropriately the the shoreline protection district. And so that was my comment earlier that I thought those needed to be shown because it's a zoning restriction and not a so since Jonathan has indicated that he is absolutely willing to put the zoning designation lines on the plan, number two is the one that I think that we can't act on and shouldn't be considered. Number three is the one that I think is superfluous because he gives the proper floodplain information in a note on the plan. So the ones I think the board should really act on on this page are number one and number four. And in both instances, from my perspective, they're appropriate waiver requests that the board should consider. With that being said, I won't say anything else.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. That that helps. Now, the way we've got, maybe I can change my view here. I'm not seeing everyone on the screen. Let me see if I can.
Glenn, Koppelman, while you're doing that, just a quick point of order. Should we have taken jurisdiction on this, or did we do that back last year?
No, we need to do that, Peter.
You do.
We accept jurisdiction on this project.
All right. Motion by Peter Coffin. You guys are going to have to, guys and ladies, you're going to have to speak Alright, motion by Peter Coffin, you guys are gonna have to, guys and ladies, you're gonna have to speak up because I cannot see all of you now, so.
I'll second, it's Robin.
Okay, thank you, Robin, so a motion by Peter Coffin, second by Robin to invoke jurisdiction on this plan, indicating that it's complete enough for us to, uh, to consider further. Any further discussion? Alright, I'll call the roll, Peter Coffin?
Yes.
Peter Bakie?
Yes.
Richard Wilson?
Yes.
Robin Dugay?
Yes.
Lynn Merrill?
Yes.
Chris Bashaw?
Yes.
And Glenn is yes, alright, so jurisdiction is invoked, invoked, thank you, Peter, for that, uh, reminder. Alright.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion, we waive nine oh five point four mandatory preliminary review because, um, they had come before the planning board, uh, once before with the, with the similar plan.
Motion by Lynn?
I'll second, it's Robin again.
Second by Robin, further discussion. Alright, so it is to, uh, the motion is to grant the waiver to nine oh five point four requiring mandatory preliminary review. I will call the roll, Peter Coffin?
Yes.
Peter Bakie?
Yes.
Richard Wilson?
Yes.
Robin Dugay?
Yes.
Lynn Merrill?
Yes.
Chris Bashaw?
Yes.
Glenn is yes as well, so that's unanimous, that one, that one passes, and that waiver is granted. And the next one would be Glenn, number four.
Correct.
Which is, uh, the requirement for, um, soil, soil, soil evaluation, soil, soil survey. And it's nine oh five point three, uh, in our regs. Correct.
I make a motion that we waive nine oh five point three definitions, letter one, soil survey report, uh, because this is a existing, um, prop, uh, existing property with everything clearly, uh, nothing's gonna be being changed, and therefore the sort of survey is not necessary.
Okay. Motion by Lynn?
Second by Peter.
Second by Peter Bakie. Further discussion. Alright, I'll call the roll, Peter Coffin?
Yes.
Peter Bakie?
Yes.
Richard Wilson?
Yes.
Robin Dugay?
Yes.
Lynn Merrill?
Yes.
Chris Bashaw?
Yes.
Glenn Koppelman is yes, so that passes unanimously. So that waiver is granted for that one. And I guess the final one is the, the one that, that Jonathan just read, uh, the one that's in front of you on the screen now, uh, section nine oh five point two four regarding the, the well and the septic systems.
Make the motion that we waive, uh, section nine oh five point two four water supply and sewage facilities because the wells and, and, uh, current septic systems have, are existing and have been existing for an extended period of time, and, uh, pocket plans are complete for their replacement, should it be necessary.
Okay, motion by Lynn?
I'll second, it's Robin.
Second by Robin, thank you. Uh, further discussion.
Yeah, um, just, I'd like to get Dennis's, as a septic designer, weigh in on this because, um, I, I had a question about the shoreline setback, if that line moves another, uh, fifty feet or twenty-five feet in to that, uh, looks like a cross-hatched, uh, five-four K receiving area. And, um, if the one-hundred-foot radius goes in there, is there sufficient area left? I know he talked about the pocket plan not, I mean, in the pocket plan, not needing the four K area anymore. But, uh, if that's the entire area for the pocket plan for the, for the new receiving area, um, is there enough place, if the system fails, to have a leach bed? And especially in unit B, uh, and so I just kinda wanted to get, uh, Dennis's opinion on that before we vote.
Dennis?
So, yes, um, uh, the septic plan does show, uh, the proposed leach field, and it looks like it's about eighty-five feet away from the well. Uh, and also, it looks like, uh, that could be moved, uh, and slid back a little bit more. So I think a septic system could be put in there to meet the hundred-foot, uh, setback. But this plan, uh, what he's showing is the four thousand square foot area. So I think the waiver is appropriate for the four thousand square foot a, area. Uh, and then when, uh, the septic plan gets submitted, perhaps he can show a hundred-foot setback to, to the well uh, from the proposed septic system, and, and, uh, I can also talk to John about that if we need to. But I think the waiver is appropriate for the four thousand square foot area because there is plenty of room. Uh, they had to put a septic system, uh, but not the, not a four thousand square foot area. So I think it, I think it's reasonable request.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis, anything further from the board on this motion? Alright, hearing none, I'll call the roll, Peter Coffin?
Yes.
Peter Bakie?
Yes.
Richard Wilson?
Yes.
Robin Dugay?
Yes.
Lynn Merrill?
Yes.
Chris Bashaw?
Yes.
Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Glenn Koppelman is yes, so that's a unanimous, uh, vote as well. Alright, and I believe that was all the waiver requests, is that, is that true?
Yes, it is.
Okay, alright, so the board has invoked jurisdiction, we've granted all the waiver requests. Uh, we've dispensed with a couple of them based on Glenn's, uh, comments, especially since one was zoning that we have no jurisdiction over. And you're taking care of that anyway, uh, by putting the, uh, the shoreline line, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the other one had already been taken care of based on previous discussions with, uh, with.
Yes.
Glenn, I have one more question?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify, did you say that you were planning to record sheet two of two, or one and two of two?
Two of two, sheet A, A-one, the condominium site plan would be recorded.
So if you're, if you're recording sheet two of two, um, I would like to see the number of employees also on that sheet as well as on sheet one.
That's fine, we can do that.
Yeah, actually, anything related to business activity, like hours of operation, number of employees, things like that, really should appear on the reported sheet.
Yes, the hours of operation and the business use officer in note number one on sheet A-one.
Yep.
So, but the employees are not on that plan, so I'll add that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board at this moment?
Yeah, I had a question, I know the last time when we saw this, um, it was an attempt to put a line right down the middle, and basically it was a, this subdivision, um, without, but, but under the guise of, of, of a condo. And lot B doesn't have any frontage. Uh, and is that requirement, since this is a subdivision request, uh, is that requirement still valid for us as, in reviewing these lots, and the fact that it doesn't have any frontage on the, um, Church Street, or on a, on a class five or better road?
I don't believe so.
No, no.
So then I guess the question is, this, this condo then is the original lot. The condo will be U-ten lot seventeen, the whole thing. And then the, divided into two land units, um, for estate planning purposes with one small common area. And, um, I guess, as long as there's an easement for the well, that's not a problem. That, in a previous condo subdivision type arrangements, we required that the well and the leaching fields, and this has separate leaching fields, so in this case, just the well, um, be part of the common area because it services both units. Um, are you comfortable with not having that as being a, a common area?
Are, who are you addressing the question to, Peter?
I guess, uh, John, um, I'm, I'm, I'm kinda questioning why the well and the lines from the well uh, to unit A, for example, uh, are just not considered a common area since it's servicing both units.
Those are covered in the declaration, I think it was item B, uh, three in the declaration of the condominium, that, which I guess you haven't seen, but, um, it's covered under, under the documents there. The common area includes, this is from the attorneys, um, the electrical cable and telephone and other utilities, pipes, ducts, conduits, plumbing, wires, meters, meter housings, and other facilities for the utility services. And all of the parts of the condominium, including personal property, are normally in common use and excluded any other easements for those because it's all shared in common, those utilities and the well. So that, it's covered in the legal document.
Okay, and, uh, quite frankly, there's no change in the, in the site, so that this isn't.
Correct.
And so this isn't changing anything, I think the state says, as long as you're not making any changes, that, uh, uh, you, you don't have to meet certain requirements, uh, subdivision requirements. So I'm, I'm fine with it, I just wanted to make sure that, uh, there was some kind of common area, and there was, that's the condominium itself on the entire lot.
Yes, well, there's also the common area around the docks.
Right, right, yeah.
Yes.
Which, which is shown on the plan, and I'm assuming it's also reflected in the docs?
Yes.
Yeah, the con, the documents.
Yep.
Yeah.
Glenn, I have a comment.
Dennis?
Um, so when talking about the well, is it, John, is there an easement for the well radius that goes on to the Christie property?
I don't know. But it's been there since nineteen seventy-seven or so.
I don't believe it does. Do you know?
I don't know, but they, they, well, if you go with the seventy-five.
It's a, it's just a corner of the driveway, of Northland's driveway.
I'm talking about the well easement.
He's talking about the well radius.
I know, but that's the only part that's within the easement. Oh, you're talking, oh, I thought you were talking on the Christie's part. It, I don't think the well is part of that easement whatsoever, it doesn't go on to the Christie's property.
It does.
The, the well radi, the protective well radius does.
Oh, the radius, I'm sorry.
Which, which means, because, because part of that protective radius is on a, on another parcel, uh, it, it limits what the person on that parcel can do with the land that's, that's in, within that protective well radius. And usually, when, when it spills over onto another lot, there's some sort of legal instrument that, that provides an easement to do that, or whatever.
Are you, are you talking about the hundred or the seventy-five?
We would be talking about the hundred.
The hundred.
Oh, wait, we've, we've waived, but we've, um, granted a waiver for the hundred.
Right, so that shouldn't matter.
So this, so the seventy-five, and the seventy-five is because of the other, on a other property from my understanding is if it doesn't go beyond an area that doesn't allow construction. If that area falls within the twenty, um, the twenty.
Setback.
Foot setback, enough, then there isn't an instrument necessary. But if it goes further than the twenty feet, and say it's twenty-five feet, then there shouldn't be an easement for the five-foot difference where you're actually on land where something could be constructed, so you are creating an, an issue for that property.
A, a well release form is something that is typically, we submitted with the, with the, uh, septic system design, so perhaps that's something that could be done, John.
Uh, we can do that.
I can tell you that I owned the property diagonally across the street until last year. And when we put new septic systems in, the state would not approve the plans until they saw the well easement document.
I don't have a, I don't have a scale with me, it, does this succeed, does that fall beyond land within the building setback?
Just barely, yeah.
Should I share my screen?
Sure.
So this is the area that Dennis is talking about, I believe, here's the, here's the well, here's the seventy-five-foot radius, and this is where it extends on to the Christie property, the driveway easement is here in this corner. And this distance from my, the hand to the property line's about thirty feet. So twenty feet would be roughly here, there's an additional ten feet or so that extends on to the Christie property. And yes, a well release could be done here, which basically says that the owners of this property agree that if there's something there that contaminates their well, uh, it's, it's too bad, and it's their problem, not the butter's problem, uh, as I understand it. But another option would be to expand the driveway easement to include this portion of the well radius, which extends on to the Christie property. Or to drill a new well, which we'd prefer not to do.
The well release that we had to, to have drawn up by our attorneys also said that the abutting property could not place, had to treat that, um, easement area, um, in a certain way, so they couldn't put hazardous materials on it, and, or anything that was going to pollute it.
Would, would Lynn, would that have, would that also have included, for instance, the, uh, the, the, the pasturing of, you know, domestic animals and things like that?
It did not.
Did not.
Maybe because we were in the middle of town and there were no animals.
Maybe. So, John, do you have a, a recommendation on how you'd like to handle this?
Well, Tina, do you have any idea? I mean, we can do the, the well release, um, when we submit the pocket leach field plan for this, for land unit B.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's what we'll have to do. Is that, do you think that's the simplest, or should we have, um, maybe do a new, uh, easement to include that?
I'm, I'm not clear about what's, what this means, is it, it's coming on to my property?
Well, you.
Right here, yes.
It's, it's the, it's the radius that you need for a well, it's just the, you need a certain area around it. And we're like ten feet over, or something.
Well, you're, you're, you're about thirty feet into Jane's property, but twenty feet of that is within the building setback, side setback line. So there's really ten feet beyond that into the property that, um.
Yeah.
Is, is, you know, could be used by, by the Christie property. And, and depending on what was going on there, could potentially impact the, the well on this site.
For us, right.
Right.
The easiest, the easiest way to do it would be a well release form, it gets recorded, uh, signed by, uh, the, uh, the, yes, uh, the condominium association, uh, and, uh, that deed uh, and, and note can be added to the, to the plan. I, I think that that would cover, cover it.
And how, does that cover the Christie's at all? What does that do for the Christie's? I don't wanna fringe on them.
No, i- i- it wouldn't, it just means that you don't hold them liable for anything that they would do on their property if there was a problem with your well.
Okay.
And since it's, it's been in existence for so long, and their use of their property hasn't affected your well, it shouldn't be a big deal for you, so.
Okay.
Unless the planning board wants to have a, a deed at easement instead of a well release form.
Yeah, I. Oh, I think a well release form is fine, it's a, it's a standard operating procedure for the state.
It, and, and frankly, it's the, it's the simplest thing, it's gonna be a lot simpler to do than, than creating new easement language.
Excellent.
That sounds fine.
Jane, just, Jane, just so that you know, if, if that's the way, if that's the way this ends up going, um, it, it requires no action on your part, and it, and it doesn't restrict the use of your property.
So can you say exactly what, explain it to me again?
If, if, if this is what the board.
Right now, I think that is, what we did was a piece of the driveway, this does not look like a piece of, well, maybe it's close to it.
This, what we're talking about has nothing to do with the driveway.
Okay, so, but I, as I, my recollection of when we did it was that we were just taking a small piece out of the driveway that didn't have any other implications, um, for this side of the property. This sounds like something else.
Well, this, yeah, there, there is an easement for the driveway, that exists, and that's acknowledged.
Yes.
Uh, what we're talking about is the protective radius for the well on the Greenwood Pond site. And that protective radius spills over onto your property, and.
It's just a radius, yeah.
And what's, and what's being proposed, and if the board goes along with it, would be that the Greenwood Pond folks would uh, sign a well release. sign a well release form, relieving you as the property that this goes over on to from any liability if anything that you did on that, within that well radius contaminated their well. So it, it's just, it's just a legal instrument relieving you from, from any action if, if something you did on your property affected their well.
And, and why would I, if, why would I have that release?
Well, you're, you're not, you're not taking any action here. What, what it's doing is they would be signing the well release, stating that if, if something happened to their well caused by action on your property in that well radius, that you're not, that, that you're not responsible.
And presumably there's something would have, have happened from them, not something from me going over onto theirs.
Okay. I, I explained, I explained it about as, about as well as I think I can. Maybe someone else can take a crack at it.
Jane, Jane, what it is, is, is a, it's, it's a fictional space. It doesn't, we're just saying, okay, in this general area, you know, that this, this town requires a certain amount of footage to be on all the sides of your well.
Right.
So you're familiar with that, right? Like when you dig a well, you know, it has to be a certain amount of footage around it where nothing's built or anything, so it doesn't contaminate your water well. Well, what happens is this, now we see it, you know, because this, this has been there for, forever. A portion of it, the, the pretend, the fake radius, you know, the, the idea of this round circle around our well. It just happens to, to, to go on your property as well. The release basically, if we do a well release, it basically releases you of any liability. Like, like say you go there and you've got a grandson that comes and he changes his oil in his vehicle and dumps oil into your property. He can do whatever, you know, but it contaminates our well, you wouldn't be held liable. And so it's actually protects you by us doing this well release form. It's a good thing.
And that's only for activity that would happen within the well radius itself. It doesn't, that liability only extends to that, to within the radius.
I see.
That is the simplest way to do it.
Yeah.
Sounds like it is.
Is the, is the board clear on this now? If not, speak up. Because I can't see you.
Shall I stop sharing?
Probably so.
Then you can see them, I think.
Oh, there we go. All the smiling faces. Okay. All right, well.
While you're voting on that, that's just a, that would be a conditional.
Right, that, that, yeah, that would, that would end up being a, a, a condition. But I have another question, and that is the board needs to be thinking about and deciding how they want to deal with the condominium documents, which we normally have council review. And we have not done that yet, so.
Yeah, I think that, that could be conditioned to. I think that is something that we've always done, so I, I, I do think that's a good idea.
Okay. And John, Jonathan, there are still some outstanding permits, is that correct? State permits?
The only two state permits would be for the pocket plan. So as long as, if the board, for instance, were to grant approval of this condominium site plan application subject to conditions, and one of the conditions be have the attorneys review the legal documents, the homeowner declaration and the bylaws. And another condition would be that the two pocket plan leach fields get approval at the state of New Hampshire DES. Then that would cover us. And then I would add the note about the fire protection and the employees count on the, and so forth. You know, the other little issues that Glenn and Dennis have raised. Those could be conditions of approval and then we could do those administratively later on.
Sure. Glenn, you're shaking your head yes on this?
Yes, I agree with that.
All right.
Glenn, do I, would I then get this easement document? Is there a document that comes out of this? Are we just, you're just agreeing now to?
Well, well, we, we, we haven't done, we haven't agreed on anything yet, but are you talking about the well release form?
I am. What, do I actually get that? Does it go in?
It's not an easement. It's a, it's a release form that the Greenwood Pond folks, the Greenwood Pond folks will, will, will sign if that's the way we go with this.
I see.
And, and certainly you could be provided a copy for your records if you, you know, if, if you needed it. But it's nothing that you have to sign.
Yes.
Okay. So what's the pleasure of the board at this time? You've invoked, let me just remind you, you've invoked jurisdiction. You've granted a number of waivers. There is a fairly hefty list of items outstanding, which could be conditions, should you wish to do a conditional approval.
Would you need all of those conditions listed or is it sufficient to reference them as noted by Glenn and Dennis?
Well, it's, it's better to enumerate them just so that it's very clear in the record. And, and if, if someone were to make a motion, they could, they could read them right from Glenn and Dennis's memos if they wished.
You know, it's, I seem to remember Ellen having sent out the condo docs to us. Am I out to lunch on that? Did anybody else remember that? I just went through my emails to try to see if I could find them and I couldn't.
Oh, I.
She did send out the condo docs for, for the granite fields.
That's right.
That, that, that's, I think, what you're thinking of, because I, when I saw those, I realized I hadn't seen them. As Glenn Greenwood pointed out, they don't normally send those out and I hadn't seen them before. We, no, so we found some issues.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
I mean, Lynn, for, you know, for, for as good as my memory is these days, I mean, we could have gotten them and I wouldn't have remembered, but you know, it's the way it is.
The older I get, the worse it gets, no question.
Oh, oh, yeah. Oh, yes. All right, folks, what do you think?
I think the only issue is the condo docs.
Yeah, well, there's. And, and I, do, do you feel comfortable giving a conditional approval based on approval of the town council?
I do.
In which case, if, if I wrote down, as, as my handwriting would let me, a, a list of conditions. And I think Dennis, and I don't have Dennis and Glenn's notes right in front of me.
I do.
Okay, good. So if I, if I start listing things here, I'm not making the motion yet, but if.
Why don't, why don't we start, if, 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 if someone's ready to start a motion, let's start it. We can always do amendments to it as we go.
I'll start the motion. I make a motion that we approve the condominium site, the condominium site plan Greenwood Pond condominium, Kingston, New Hampshire, dated eight twenty-five twenty. And with the conditions that the existing sign that is shown on the plan should be identified as a sign. The plan should include the required note found at section nine oh five point one four C twenty-nine regarding the Kingston Fire Department regulations. The plan indicates the number of employees for each building on sheet two of two with the plan. That a well easement for the radius of the well that falls on the Christie property be drawn.
Well, release form.
I said, excuse me, the well release form. Thank you. Be recorded.
And the town council approves the condominium docs.
Can, can I suggest some more before we second this?
Sure.
Um, that the change the proposed driveway that shows on plan A one to, I started the proposed driveway easement to remove the word proposed. And then that the easement be recorded at Rockham County. That the note six be filled in with the dates of the subdivision approval, which I know you already have. And also that the New Hampshire DES septic system approval for the pocket plans be noted on the, with the approval dates on the, on plan A one. On you mentioned condo documents to see that the notation of the town's shore lamp setbacks, protection setbacks be shown on plans A one. That was from Glenn Greenwood's comments. And I would, I would add that the crosshatched areas for the four K areas show up as, in, in the legend is what they are. Just, just put a box in there and it says, with, you know, the crosshatching on it, say these are four K receiving areas. I mean, I know you guys all know what it is, but us civilians don't necessarily. And is it, yeah, and you, you mentioned the review of the condo documents by the town council on that, that driveway easement also be reviewed by the town council.
And one more, I think it would be that the new sanitary waste disposal system plans for unit A, that it be verified that the seasonal water table must be six feet rather than five point eight five.
Yeah, I, I agree. I'm hopefully, Rick Wilson was to say something. As do I, when, when appropriate.
All right, so Peter and Lynn, that's, I mean, we're, we're still in the making of the motion here, so maybe we should. Do you have something to add, Richard, or are you going to second it? Richard, you're muted.
I'm mute.
Hours of operation.
That's on there.
Okay, and that no changes are happening to the outside and that it meets dark skies.
Oh, for the lighting.
For the lighting.
Lighting, yeah, there's not lighting taken.
I, there's, are there any changes proposed to the lighting, John?
No, no, we're not doing anything to the lighting, so I don't know.
It's all existing. So just, and just so that Tina and folks are aware that if, if changes were to be made to lighting that need to be compliant with the current lighting ordinance, which requires, you know, fully shielded fixtures and dark sky compliance and so forth and so on.
I, Mr. Chairman, I have two, two comments. First of all, at the risk of creating more work for the town attorney, I think that she or he also should review the drainage easement that's proposed, because that's for the pipe from Church Street down through, out toward Greenwood Pond. And it's a town, it's an easement from Greenwood Pond condominium to the town. So they should just make sure that it's got the proper language for Public Works Maintenance Highway Agent to do what he needs to do. And secondly, we have a little bit of a catch twenty-two on recording the Christie driveway easement, which had been suggested it should be recorded prior to the plan being complete. The, the driveway easement for Christie refers to the plan.
His plan.
So the plan has to be recorded in order for the plan number to be put on the driveway easement that the Christie's have already signed.
Right.
So.
As long as you say that there is an easement existing and it, I don't know if it needs to be recorded with these plans or, or just.
You just put a note that says to be recorded.
Yeah, there, that works.
Okay, that's fine.
And then it can be recorded subsequent or right, right on the heels of.
Sure, sure, yes.
Glenn?
Finally, well, the, the one thing I would ask that you add is we have a third, we, we did a third waiver, a new waiver regarding the septic system and the hundred-foot setback for the wall radius. And that is not reflected in note two, which only talks about the soil survey report and the mandatory preliminary review. So the waiver that was granted for the information that was just submitted to the town for review yesterday, that waiver should also be shown at, on that note.
Yes.
And that's all, all I had. So I think the motion or Lynn should maybe accept all those.
Accept all the suggestions.
Okay, and before you, before we second it, I have, I have a chat item here that came from broadcast control. So I don't know if it's from Ellen, but it says, don't return escrow until document received. And I'm, it says Ellen. Does, does, does someone understand what that means?
EPM.
May not be talking about this. It may be talking about one of the things we talked about before, returning.
Well, I, I, I would suggest that, that what she means is that the money that Tina and Abinag, the Greenwood Pond people have already paid into the account not be returned until the bills have been submitted from Mr. Quintel and, and anyone else who had the legal counsel. And in fact, Greenwood Pond may have to pay a little bit more to cover the legal counsel, but that's, you know, remains to be seen. So I think that's, I would guess that's what she means.
That wouldn't be part of this motion, because that would be something we check up at a later meeting.
It would be an administrative thing, yes.
Right. Okay, so I'm not seeing anything more coming back from her, so I'm assuming that that's, that covers it. All right, so Lynn, you've accepted all of those items into your motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it as amended.
All right, so motion by Lynn Merrill, second by Peter Coffin, with all of the, all of the amendments and items that were, that were added. Any further discussion from the board? Whoops. Before I do that, Ellen further commented, I mean, don't release escrow until the easement is recorded and received. Okay. All right. Further discussion from the board. Before I go for the vote, is there any outstanding question, John or Tina, from you before I do this? All right. Okay, if folks are ready, I'm going to call the roll. Peter Coffin?
Yes.
Peter Bakie?
Yes.
Richard Wilson?
Yes.
Robin DeGuey?
Yes.
Lynn Merrill?
Yes.
Chris Bashaw?
Yes.
And Glenn Koppelman is yes as well. So that vote is unanimous. And Jonathan and Tina, thank you very much.
We thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, everyone.
And be in touch with Glenn Greenwood if you have any questions and need any assistance on what we just did.
Thank you, John, so much. You did so much work.
Yes, thank you. You're welcome. All right, bye-bye.
All right, thank you. Good night.
Okay. Okay, let's see. We have we made it through the.
You closing the hearing?
Yes, thank you. Closing the hearing at eight oh one PM.
Can I ask kind of a late question, but should we have put a timeframe on that?
If not stated, it's ninety days.
If it's not stated, it's ninety days, so that's, so that's what it is.
Short amount of time, but okay.
Well, I mean, they could have asked for more and normally we do ask that question, but but we didn't. All right, we also didn't talk about substantial completion, but since there's nothing to complete as far as the, you know, there's no construction going on.
No.
We, we don't have to ask that question. All right. So going back to the, to our, the beginning of our meeting where we were talking about releasing of balance in, in old escrow funds. There were three, and somebody remind me, did we act on all three?
I, yeah, I believe we did.
We did four Main Street, we did.
CBS.
CBS and we did Capri. Capri.
Yeah, you did. You accomplished all three.
All right. The only other item that I have for us to deal with is the question from the residents at two Bob White Drive that we received back at late last year. And we wanted to do a little bit of research, because there's a request to essentially have an agricultural business at that location. And there was a question about whether. We wanted to do a little bit of research because there's a request to essentially have an agricultural business at that location and there was a question about whether. Uh when we updated the agricultural uh parts of our zoning last year, did we include agricultural activities in single family residential and. Um I believe Glenn or Ellen indicated that we did not. So. Unless this request is going to be for an in-home occupation and it would qualify under that. Uh. It 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 is not an allowed activity and therefore would require um a variance. So Glenn, any.
By virtue of the. Well, by virtue of the activity being agricultural, it can't it doesn't meet the in-home occupation because it's. It's business related things happening outside of the structure.
Right.
So it 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 really does force this into a Z B A action.
Okay. All right. So.
We'll. We'll relay that information to the.
If if you you and or Ellen could get back to uh the Hopkynsons at two Bob White Drive and just let them know what their.
Yes, absolutely.
Would be, that would be helpful.
We'll do that.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh I have nothing else in front of me. Does anyone else have other business? Or Glenn or Dennis?
Glenn?
Peter?
Um was there something set out on the emails about a request for a continuance for Saddleup Berkshire Dominion?
Yes.
That's that's at our next meeting.
All right, so it's not you.
That will happen on February on February second.
That's that's next to that's next Tuesday, Peter.
All right, just so they're not going to be beyond that thirty day period. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, they've granted in the request for continuance, they've granted an extension.
Perfect.
And we'll deal with that next Tuesday, which was the agenda that they were going to be on and and that's that's when we can deal with it.
Perfect.
Okay, uh Lynn?
I just have one thought. At our last meeting, it was a little awkward to be getting letters coming in during the meeting. From a but from the public. And I'm wondering if we should, it's hard enough to get through the letters that come in the day of the meeting and try to read them and. Absorb them and understand them. I'm wondering if we should have a deadline by which let letters from the public have to be in to make the planning board meeting that night. If it should be two in the afternoon to give Ellen time to get it done before she has to before her office hours are over, if it should be the day before. Just wondering if perhaps we should do something. So that we can really consider what it is that we're being sent. And absorb it before we have to face it at a meeting, but before we review it at a meeting.
Hmm.
Especially especially we're giving people the opportunity if they can't make that deadline and they they do have the opportunity for public input. Um wait a second, but from Ellen, the only were sent as they had been sent earlier and missed. Board already requires them. I um. You know, she's been sending them out as she gets them.
Yeah.
Comes into the office and and then forwards a bunch. Um but.
But I don't.
Think if they haven't, we haven't had a chance at least, you know, the day of the meeting to read them, you know, by by midday of the day of the meeting. Um, I think we should. Allow them maybe to make pu- public comment, um but to know that. The board hasn't received those letters, you know, you're right. I think there should be a cutoff because, you know, we can't be reading them while we're meeting. Um. Yeah, sec.
Ellen says Ellen says they weren't received that day. They've been sent out and just missed by Glenn, so I I get that. Um but still, we do receive an awful lot the day of the meeting and it's a lot to go through and I think if we're. Really want to respect and you're right, people can get up at the meeting and have their set. Just as they would at a public, you know.
So if the deadline's already Friday. Right, would we just wait so anything that came in after that time would then be tabled to the to a subsequent meeting, correct?
Right.
Well, that's no, that's not the deadline for the letters. That's the deadline for people getting plans in.
Ellen's saying that's what it says is that the deadline is Friday.
Oh.
Or the board has held. The the board has held that you would not accept or discuss letters. If they weren't submitted. By Friday, the meeting, the the Friday before a meeting. The only thing I'd say about this is, and that's been a policy that was pretty much adhered to. But somebody at a at a where when we're in a public forum like we are. Somebody can submit their comments. In writing to the board. Um when we were meeting as a board. They always had the right to either say it or it's submitted in writing. And but the board has always had the right to say, we'll take that under advisement. And not you're not forced into making a decision about something about any testimony that's presented in the public. Forum portion of a planning board meeting. Um so I think any letters that would come in during the Zoom proceeding, I think it's perfectly fine for the board to acknowledge that we've received them. And that they'll. Take them under advisement.
Well, and just and just to be clear, as Ellen was trying to explain in the chat. Um, uh the the instance or two that happened at the last meeting were be. What happened because I had accumulated letters that had come in over a period of a month. And I must have missed uh one in my in my sequence and uh as I was going through them. Uh the person who. Who wrote one of them realized that I had missed it and brought it to the attention of. Okay, it's so it I I I mean, there's that situation, but then there's the situation you're talking about, Lynn, which is. Uh indeed, we we do, we have been getting a lot of letters uh very close to the to the meeting time.
So if we do have a meeting of the Friday before, is that. Prominent on our on our face our website page? Because if it isn't, it should be.
Yeah, well, I think I don't think it does show there now, Lynn, and that's something that we could absolutely add. Just so that people are aware that that's a planning board policy.
Well, yeah.
And understand they I I I think even in this weird world of Zoom. That when you open it up for a public forum, somebody as part of their public comments could submit their public comments in writing and. We would be amiss if we said, no, you didn't get it to us by Friday. In those instances, I think the board would have to say, we we are in receipt of this and we'll take it under advisement. So if they can't have any expectation that you're going to talk about something you've just received.
Well, and 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 in most of the cases with these letters, w- we end up not really discussing them. I mean, we're bringing it to the attention of the board. Uh we're bringing it to the attention of anyone who might be listening and um. And if someone has something that they really want to discuss, they have the opportunity to do it by being recognized and participating.
We can definitely make that addition to the to the website. I think that's a that's an appropriate thing to do.
Well, if, you know, frankly, I had forgotten or maybe I just. Whatever didn't remember um for some reason that that was our policy. I just don't recall that, but if it is.
It was back several years.
Okay, well, if it is, then then it need it needs to be made clear uh. On our webpage that 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 that's what it is. So is is. Is the board comfortable with us doing that and putting it up there and 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 following that as best we can?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would just say that then the onus is back on us to make sure that we. Sort of. Follow whatever it is we're telling people the deadline is. So if it is Friday, we really should not be acknowledging anything that comes in after that.
Right.
Other than to the extent that Glenn just indicated as it's under advisement.
We we can say that we've received them um and because we can read them, um it doesn't necessarily mean we have to enter them into the public record. Uh so um I I think it it. To be more proactive about getting the word out there because a lot of people were complaining, you know, months ago that they didn't even know about this project, the big project. Um, you know, it's hard for us to believe, but you know, it's it's on the town website. Um, maybe if somebody must have put something on the Facebook site, I think that would be something that if Ellen's on there, she could do as an administrator, but um like Rich has taken his head, but.
Well.
Um, you know, it it just just sort of, yeah, and Chris is smiling because.
You know, the planning board does not have a Facebook page, I don't believe.
Right, yeah.
If we had an official. If we had an official page, then that would be a place to put it in addition to the website, but since we don't.
Yeah, maybe maybe somebody who's not on the board.
I'd be I'd be very careful about that.
Yeah, no, I I certainly wouldn't.
It's been all over the Kingston Facebook page.
We're we're meeting the wall. That's all that counts.
Yeah.
Okay, Glenn and Ellen, uh if if.
On the Kingston.
I'm sensing that that if that's our policy, then that and that's what the board wants to follow. Uh unless we're going to change the policy, then uh then we need to make sure that 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 it's stated clearly so the public understands it.
I think Chris just said something and I think he wasn't heard.
So I just said, you know, that that town Facebook page, there's over like five to seven thousand followers on it. And there are numerous threads about this project on it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
One of those things, people's. Lack of participation in town government doesn't mean we need to send them a flyer about everything that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Ellen has made a comment. We'll get it on the page tomorrow. Okay.
That's the town page, yeah.
Yes.
The official town website, yeah.
That's the website.
I think another thing that came up last time was was and this may have been a result of the uh lack of the electronic versions and stuff. Um, I'm not sure every town department got the uh new sets of plans uh in a timely manner and uh. And and so the. Because.
Ellen said Ellen. Ellen said, yes, they did.
I actually I actually made sure that when they came in that Thursday, that every I stayed late to make sure they went to everyone.
Failure to pick them up is not failure to say you got them.
Exactly. Exactly.
Okay, enough of that. Um. Is there anything else?
I just, this isn't important, but I know we've gone back and forth a lot about the the benefits of Zoom or not. Um and I had caused this week to listen to the selectments meeting, which is in person and then. Um wanted to go back on some of the the planning board hearings relative to the the project we just discussed. The audio on the Zoom meetings is so much clearer and easier to sort of. Figure out where you are in the process and where you need to go back to than it is in the in the public meeting, so. That was sort of an unintended positive consequence, I guess.
Well, thank you for that comment.
And there's no lack of participation when you've got fifty six, fifty five, sixty people on the meetings.
Yeah.
No, it's definitely um it. It's out there and we get more participation than Zoom, as Glenn pointed out before, than we ever had in in the town hall.
And I can reach my ice cream.
I was I was a big, I I didn't really like the Zoom platform because I kind of miss that in-person stuff. But I will say from a productivity standpoint, there are times during these Zoom meetings, I have laptops going and I have my plan sets out there and. I gotta say, I have, I seem to have access to it. It's it's much more easy for me to access a lot of different information. Like I can actually, you know, even those last minute emails that are set up, I can bring them up on one laptop while I'm. You know, doing the call on another laptop where I think in person, it would almost appear as rude if I'm buried in a computer at the at the thing, but. Get information.
Yeah. Well, you know, there's no question that there are pluses and minuses to this whole way of doing business, but. Uh you know, for better or for worse, uh it's it's it is working and you know, we're 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 making it work, so. And in some cases, there are positive benefits to it.
I just hope when we go back to in-person, there's kind of at least maybe to get continued participation from the public. That there is like a remote login, I know a blending of the two somehow, even if we ever do go back in person because.
Well.
Yes, we we've definitely seen way more people show up than ever before.
And it's so much easier to see the plans, I think for the public to see the plans and to understand what's going on, which I think saves a tremendous amount of time.
Yep.
Yeah, the share the share screen is so much better like this than when they're, you know, up at the easel point or something.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, Chris, to to your point, um you know, when we do finally go back to in-person, if if we are able, you know, if we did want to uh to have a remote. Capability for those to participate in that fashion. Um we we need to be upgrading technology at town hall significantly to make that happen.
And we got a big no vote last year.
Yeah, well.
That's beating a dead horse.
Anyway. Anything else?
Yes, Chris, would you call me tomorrow afternoon, please?
Sure can.
When you have a break?
Yeah.
I never know if you've got somebody, you know, up against your car, so I don't like calling you.
Yeah, you can call tomorrow.
Any other business? Ellen, anything? Here, nope, okay, nothing. Glenn? Glenn?
No, I have nothing for you.
Dennis? All right.
Dennis is waving.
Without object without objection. I will call us adjourned at eight twenty P M.
It was probably.
Thank you all. We'll see you next Tuesday.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night, everybody.
Good night. Good night.